You need to know how that affects that contract as well. Let me just make a phone call to ask them about that.
That's probably under purpose, Public Utilities Repurchase Act, which is a federal act that permits them, actually requires utilities to buy that power.
It would just may affect their dividends, whatever it just means.
We must use electric, Ed, we must use electricity to pump the town wells, right?
Yes, but as a different contract. The municipal buildings are with you guys. I thought they were all together, but they weren't. I did some research with Diane, who found out that they never considered the water. So we did the water separately. And we're in a more aggressive payback point that on the last four pay periods, $4,000, $3,000 dealt, we've been $4,000 out of that month.
Through the consortium.
Yes, that's a more aggressive program.
That's something I'd point out to Siemens, talking to them as you make your estimates, knowing that you're dealing with a consortium, whether you're going to pay back, you know, or how much you're going to save on energy.
When they look at their savings cost, do they look at our contract with the consortium?
No.
And our dividends at the end of the year?
They're looking to reduce energy use.
Right.
And based on, whatever you're paying now, they see a 25% reduction. So they're going to guarantee you a reduction in energy use. How, you know, what you're paying per kilowatt hour may change over time. They can't, they know they can't control that over 10 years. But they can say, based on an assumption of a certain rate increase is the rule they did set.
I guess the one question is whether or not that contract with the consortium prevents us from generating our own electricity. I don't think, I don't think it was anybody who was thinking about it when. But I would just clarify that.
That, I mean, that's, that's the question you're asking, is whether or not by generating our own, we violate our contract. I would doubt it, but.
Or do they have incentives for us to do that? Is there something else that could be brought into the question?
On that contract, you must understand this. We have to take advantage of utilities, bring the power to us. There's a fee for that. We buy our, our power in a grid which is controlled by actually coming source. There are a few different programs they have, accounting, pre-safe program. But what I read, when I signed up for it, was that if you sell that power, you get that credit.
On a residential, I looked at an analysis of its solar exposures. And if I generate excess, it's just a credit. And the dollars that when I need it, on and off there, when I need to draw electricity in, I've just, I've got a credit in so many kilowatt hours. So whatever the going rate is, I'm just trading one thing to the other.
Your things supposed to spin in the opposite direction.
I believe so, yeah.
What, what are we supposed to do with this?
Okay, well, one possibility might be to, assuming that we are somewhat in favor of this, because the Energy Committee plans to send a separate letter or memo in the near future regarding this recommendation.
Well, I should add that we did, at an November night meeting, we did look at it. And it was a split decision, there was good arguments both ways on this, whether to continue with Siemens. But we did vote that we thought to recommend to the selectmen to take the next step and to get the IGA done. It doesn't commit us to Siemens any more than they're going to give us and generate good information for us, and with that, we make a subsequent decision. And if we do decide to move forward, then the money spent into the, any equipment we buy.
So you just want to go ahead?
With the IGA.
With the financing, with the article and the warrant?
That's it.
Basically. So that's really the only action we're really taking, isn't it?
Right, and we're not really spending the money right now.
Correct, we did not spend it at all.
But, but do we need to have a source?
It's required to be able to proceed with the IGA.
But I mean, do we need a source of the money?
Yes, we need to vote it and set it aside.
Set it.
Just sit there.
So where are we going to take it?
If it's not spent, I recommend you take it from free cash.
There goes the free cash.
So once the town votes to do that, then we can then move ahead?
Yes.
With, with what you've already voted on. But we sort of have to get the funding from the town at the special town meeting first.
We'll have to have that commitment before Siemens will move ahead.
Exactly, exactly. I think that's where we're at right now.
Yeah.
And so we have an article here, right?
Yeah, we have an article.
With two articles that outline the check.
Well, you're going to have to stand up and sort of explain that at the special town meeting.
I will try.
Now, you will have to.
Well, I will do it, but I'll try to do a good job.
No, you will do a good job. There's no trying.
He made you understand it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not as smart as Ed Colley.
You're not as smart.
Alrighty.
So do we need to take any actions?
Our action is whether or not we.
I think we just, do you want to go through the rest of the articles?
Thank you, Kurt.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, that's a wait song.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kurt. So I want to, before you start that, I gave you a budget.
Money, 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 money.
Currently, we actually, since the last meeting, received vocational tuition numbers, firm numbers, and therefore, the, there was actually a reduction in that line. So, so in the budget, if you want to go through that, that's Article One. I added the NAPs that we discussed in the last meeting.
Oh, you're on the budget?
Yeah, the budget. That's basically Article One, but that's going to be one of the decisions about money. I added the $40,000 for the ambulance wages. You'll see a credit for the vocational school tuition. So the number, the actual number is actually less than the 564,730. But in speaking with Denise, you know, she's, she's passionate, comes up with a number. She suggested that there could be another person coming into vocational during the year. So she recommended we leave one, enough for one pupil. So I just minus out the remainder and left enough. She gave me the number for one pupil and I left that in there.
Wait a minute, you're getting me confused. So the $40,770?
The minus.
The minus is.
Is the actual reduction.
There's, there's the actual reduction, but.
That we need to take.
That we, that we should take. We could take more, but we're, we should only take this because we might have another student.
Correct. The actual tuition number is 546, 546,000 and some change. So I'm, I'm suggesting we leave it at 564. The regional schools, is that 30,000 that you see? And then the only other addition is, on the last page, we had one bill from FY of 10 that we need to pay, 276,87. So then on the page that has the revenues, you can see at the bottom of that page now, Page Two, you actually now, because of those adjustments, have excess levy capacity of 7,565. So at this point, if you, if your budget was just as that, you wouldn't have to do anything to balance your budget.
And that's even without revenues from Mills County?
Well, I mean, you have to go to town meeting and vote those things. But what I'm saying is you don't have taken money from free cash to balance this budget, as it stands.
Because of the vote budget?
Because we were off by.
We, we over budgeted vote.
Chief Silver, now you had your hand up?
Yes, I was curious if, as was discussed that two weeks ago at the fiscal policies meeting, have the vocational and school choice residencies been verified yet?
They have not, but Eileen has, actually, no, Eileen doesn't have the list. I won't give Eileen the list, but they have them. And I haven't received, I haven't received the vote. I need to get a copy of the school choice.
And do we know when that will be done?
Eileen, I can give her that list of the vote folks tomorrow. But as far as the school choice, I don't know where that comes down. I think it comes from reports that are supposed to be done on October 1st. So I will probably need to get a copy of that list if I can, as soon as possible.
Jess, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When we were putting this budget together and we're meeting with all the departments, school of choice, not school of choice, but the vocational ed, we're supposed to have a drop dead date, a number of pupils that we're supposed to have each year, okay? I don't know if it was July 1st, but there was a date established when they were going on these schools to work. And there was not supposed to be any added after the fact. How come nine months later, eight months later, we find that there's a surplus and, you know, we should have known that before we put the budget? Because we were supposed to have a number of pupils going into vocational ed ahead of time to establish a number, so we could carry that number. And now they're talking about, oh, there's an overage. Is the overage because people didn't show up, or they estimated higher? Or why are we adding new persons to vocational ed after the fact? Like they want to owe money because they might have a new person going in there? I thought there was a drop dead date before that year started, a number of students going into vocational ed.
I don't remember.
An issue with vocational ed in Westfield and North Ham.
I don't remember a drop dead date.
Yeah, I thought there was a drop dead date.
Because I.
I didn't bring it up, the school committee brought it up. There was a date they had to have the numbers in mind, and that's what the budget was based on. But I'm surprised, when it's such a linear, we have $50,000 sitting in that budget.
Because this has come up other years where, where they, where they, they're not as many students as they anticipate go. I mean, this happened two years.
But I'm just asking, is the reduction, students have they anticipated? Or they anticipate additional students? That's all I want to know.
We can contact them and try to find out, absolutely.
That's all I'm concerned is that $50,000 at the end of the year, when you kind of put a budget together, you need 35 balancing. It's immediate impact.
Right, and I'm sure as you know, there's some unforeseen things.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm trying to handle is that, if there was a drop dead date established for vocational ed, and the number of students surpassed that, how come? Or if there's a reduction, why?
As far as keeping that extra amount, what Denise had said was that there could be somebody that moves in from outside of the district.
So I was thinking somebody moves in in July.
Not somebody that is there, always that's going, it's somebody that comes in that's already going there, that they would have to fund.
I think we have to watch the door.
If that's the case, then why can't the school come back to the town seeking that money later? Like, the rest of us have to do.
Exactly. I mean, I, I'm telling you that because I didn't, that's how I put it on your budget, but if you want to go down to the drop dead number that they have right now as of October 1st, you can do that. That's the number they're going to need. But if something changes, that you just have, would have to add money back if that were to happen.
I mean, Jess, this is not the first time enough, but it happens, so it's happened before Diane came too. I'm just saying, there seems to be surplus money in that account, so we just pass. And if we get a hard number to deal with, we should be dealing with that number and releases that money for other things that we're, we're trying to consent and can't cut.
I agree, sure. Alright, good point. So we will get in touch with Smith Volk and see what their accounting procedure is on the drop dead date and.
No, I don't think it's, I think it's what our.
It's a regional.
It's a regional, yeah, it's a regional.
That's true. Okay, alright, so then that leaves us.
So then the.
Back to your revenues.
Right, so the revenue sheet reflects that now you have excess capacity.
$7,000.
That'll pay for the Siemens IGA.
There you go, it's gone already.
Easy come, easy go.
So then your articles, so that was Article One. Articles Two, Three, and Four, well, well, I don't know what you want to do about. Right now, you don't need money to reduce the rate because it's your balance.
Well, we just pass that over.
After you do that.
Why, wouldn't we leave that on the, the warrant and just pass it over?
Sure, you can.
Just in case?
You're not opposed to it, but yeah.
No, but just in case?
Sure.
It gives us flexibility at the meeting?
And you may decide otherwise to add another sum to the budget, so that's why I left it. And the free cash from stabilization, I did the sum of money as you asked, restricted and all purpose. Article Five is the.
Well, now, yeah, okay, so now we don't need to do it from free cash to reduce the FY 11 tax rate?
Well, that's what I was saying, but you might, I mean, unless, you know, you haven't had a full discussion about the entire budget.
Right, so we need to do that later.
So then Article Five is the Holland conservation restriction. And Mike pointed out to me earlier, I have a typo, that the written $14,000 should be 15, the total is 15. And that's coming from CPA, open space. So then, this is your article, when you have your motion, it will say, to see the town vote to transfer from community preservation and space and how the amount of.
But this is the first time we hear about that Holland property, right? I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, they went first, they, they've been discussing it with CPA. This is actually just to, they have to, they still have to do the, you know, the title surge and all of that stuff too, they have it, it's not.
Just while we're talking about land, one quick thing, there's a piece of property in Coleman that abuts the rail track. It's six Coleman, it's for sale. And when you talk about a rail trail head, it might be a location to put a parking. That, that's six Coleman's for sale. It's.
Is that all that, is that commercial?
It's commercial land for sale.
It's the, the old.
Yeah, there's also D P D property.
Yeah. It's on, it's on the East Hampton side of Coleman.
Oh.
It's on the East Hampton side of Coleman.
I can show you the pictures here?
Right, where the pasture is, that's, that's zone commercial, and that's not listed in the audience, it's for being for sale. So if you want to, someone wants to relay that to.
Well, wasn't Boyle, is that part of what Boyle was building on?
No, it's zone commercial, so I don't want to expect to put there. But it is for sale, when you were talking about needing a rail trail head for the bike trail.
I'm just trying to figure out where six is. Six, where I think it's called Westland.
This is a picture of the, of East Hampton. It's on the East Hampton side, it's on Old Lake Waterway now. Well, it's just where we're talking about land, if we're going to, with the Holland property, this might be a property that would be something to think about as well.
Well, then you have to send it to CPA.
Yeah, right, right, and it's.
Is that the Holland property?
We're not going to circle here. Very, very careful.
Always on the, always on the joints of the pages, I was amazed.
It always is. Okay, so then, so Article Five then is what we're considering right now, this warrant.
Put your reading section on.
So this was brought by the CPC, I'm presuming.
Correct, yeah. Jimmy asked me if I could help you.
I may have that, so we just need to decide whether or not. We have two-thirds vote required.
That's an acquisition.
Okay, any discussion from this board?
It's always a good idea to put money into there. It actually, part of their manhandle, it's on, it abuts the manhandle, the manhandle.
River.
Yeah, someplace where the truck, or the trail, or the transportation. Hazel Yon or something.
Is the dealer going to be there?
It's the one on Moosehead, it was up Moosehead.
Right, right. I'll show you on the map here.
Article Six is the $30,000 from the ambulance base.
Right.
And I've added that into the budget and that's for sale. And then Article Seven is the vote transfer on 75.
David's in the left, circled there.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And then Article Eight and Nine are the investment grade audit departments we need. And then Article Six is, I mean, Article 10 is the, I attached, or I gave you a copy of a letter that we brought from HNC, he's looking for Hampshire Power. And back in, I guess, I don't know, some time ago, they wanted the town to vote to adopt the resolution to see if they'll electric rate, so that they can come in and offer a program to our residents. And I guess at the town meeting at the time, we just passed over the article. It had an appropriation in it, so maybe that was why. They don't need the appropriation any longer, they're just looking for that resolution. He's actually going to send me the new, one article that they want us to use, but I just put that in there, so a placeholder. But he's actually also going to come and talk to you on November 30th about the program, so if you have questions. But I told him I needed to get it beforehand because we had posted the law.
And we do, maybe we need to remind him that it was not voted to approve.
He knows, yeah. He was the one probably told me at the passover, and then I got the copy of the article for my name.
I ate dinner with him the other night at the Chicago meeting, he was at my table.
So it'll be here on 30th. And then the last article is just to pay the, out of the year, you know, pay unpaid bills from free tuition.
I do have one question. I did submit an article, but I don't see it here.
I think this can be taken up later on because of the nature of that, has to do with non-union employees, wage negotiations?
I just thought we were looking for articles, I don't know. Anything more than that, I just thought.
No, it's how we're going to take it up.
What I mean, it was just a request for an article.
Does that automatically mean it will go on?
Hmm, I don't know, somebody's got on it.
Apparently it didn't, but I've been telling you, we're going to be talking about it in executive session.
Why wouldn't my article get on?
Why wouldn't anybody's article get on? It needs to be voted on by the board.
Right, but we don't even see my article taken.
David, I'm not going to sit here and argue back and forth with you about that. If you want to sit in the meeting, you will understand what's going on.
Jess, Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking, where's my article?
I'm just telling you, it's not there.
Why isn't it there?
I'm not going to tell you that.
Because it was just a simple request for articles, and I wanted to know why the chairman.
We're not required to put every article.
Excuse me, say, say, what's, what's that problem again? We?
The board.
We, the board. The board did not take an action on it. Ann didn't take an action on it. Mike didn't take an action on it. Dougie didn't take an action on it. And I didn't take an action on it. But it's not here. Why isn't it here?
Was it something that should be better taken up to executive session, that day?
You just asked for articles.
Well, what was the article?
Look, you made a decision, but you don't know about the decision. That's my point.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Exactly, that's what I'm telling you. You don't know.
Well, you explain.
I will.
Well, wait a minute, why aren't we explaining? What is your article?
Well, it was a simple request. I received an email from the town administrator asking for requests for articles.
Right, everybody got it.
Yeah, everybody got it. So I sent an email back with an article.
Well, what was the article?
Well, it actually wasn't an article, it was just to put raises on there, but there was no, there was no article per se.
It was an article to use some of the free cash to give raises to the town hall employees that did not get raises this year. A simple article, there's nothing analysis behind it. It was just a simple article, because I think we talked about, in the process of doing the town budget, we talked about, if there was some money, we could look at giving them raises.
I mean, I, I, I have to be honest, I don't know that I would support the article, but.
But, I mean, just in due process, the article's not even here.
But did we draft an arti, did you draft an article, or was it just a request for an article?
It was a request for an article, and I have a, a billing sheet or a financial sheet supporting what the cost would be. But the fact that it's not even on here raises questions that can be answered at another time, because I want to focus on the article.
Alright.
So, I received a document from the accounting office that the approximate cost for the raises is $22,500 for the individuals that didn't get the raise. And that was going to be my heart. As simple as that. That we take some of the free cash and we fund the raises for the individuals that did not get raises.
Are you talking about retroactive raises, or just raises from here forward?
I'm not sure if the numbers are retroactive or from this point forward. Now, it could have been a point of discussion, but the fact is, it's not even here.
The intent was to discuss, no, it wasn't intended not to discuss.
I think your last statement was, the final article is, that's why I asked, where's my article? You said the final article is the payment for $226.
Yeah, there isn't an article on the one, that's right.
Alright.
But there was an intent to discuss.
Where are we going from here with the?
Request.
Well, I just wish it could have been here.
No, and, and we shouldn't lose track of that you requested an article being on here. And that, but, the question is, where do we go from here tonight? Where are we going from here?
Executive session.
Exec, not to discuss articles though.
Why would we go to executive session?
To discuss non-union wages.
Well, this, this is, from my understanding, going into executive session, that's to be in negotiation for non-union wages, correct? We're not in negotiations with anybody. We're talking about an article. That we've been talking about wages in the budget, in the public, in public session all along. And I don't see the justification to go into executive session to have a discussion that's been open in the public.
Because it will conceivably impact something that is in open negotiations.
That's not a reason, that's not a reason, they're two separate events. They're two separate events. We're talking about town hall employees that did not get raises.
Well, let's be clear, are you talking about town hall, only town hall employees, or are anyone who didn't get a raise?
Any, any of the non-unions that didn't get a raise.
So, so dispatchers, that's right, yeah.
Which, which is another subject that I don't really want to bring up, but it's probably what you're relating to, is that there was a letter sent here, received here in our office on October 18th, from the Policeman's Union stating that the dispatchers would like to become part of the union. I found out about that letter this evening.
We both did.
And I think that's inappropriate. I think it's a slap in this town. If there's a request to join a union, that letter should be notified to us pronto and not set aside.
It wasn't set aside, it was action taken.
But no, but no.
This is the first time that it comes to the board.
No, I think a letter like that.
Something like, I, I, something like, we've had, we've had meetings since that letter came. We, we, I didn't hear anything about it until tonight.
I think that's inappropriate.
Yes, I apologize for not bringing to you.
Apology, apology is accepted, but moving forward, something like that, something like that should not occur, okay? There's no, there's no reason for that to occur. Just like there's no reason why an article, again, I received an email, present an article. I put an article.
You received on an email that was sent out to departments. It wasn't, it wasn't really a solicitation to the board, so I think you were CC, as was the finance committee, because the board's like, directed me to send a request out to departments.
But I, I, I understand David's point, and I, and I, I frankly am the leader of the, saying that we can't afford the raises anyway. But I have to agree with David, that's a subject that should be discussed in open meeting as opposed to going in executive session. I don't think that falls, if, if the discussion has been, and Ed already brought it up advocating for the employees in public session, it's not a surprise. I don't think it's, I don't think it's union, it's negotiations, I don't see it as, I don't see it as negotiation.
It's just what it is. It's, it's just numbers that we couldn't do. Now we have money, and we talked about if we had money, perhaps we would.
And well, and that.
Perhaps we would.
Perhaps we would, and the question we, because with Ed's own statement tonight, we're going to be $50,000 in the hole on a good, good winter.
Now I would ask, if, if I wasn't supposed to submit an article, if a department had actually submitted the same article, and the answer is yes.
Yes.
And that wasn't put on this as well. Because another department had actually put the same article request in here, and it's not.
Well, then who made the decision, what articles got put into the draft, and who?
I did.
I don't know whether that falls within your power as chairman.
Right, and nor does it fall within the power of any of the board members to create an article.
I don't think, I think anybody can create an article.
So I'm just saying that Mr. Colley as well placed the same article, and it's not.
I mean, there are several articles that I would have problems with tonight, which.
I think it's up to Mater to decide what's the reason for convening executive session.
But we're not, we're not even talking about it.
I don't know that that's true. There are stated reasons.
Would you like to discuss?
Let's do it in an open meeting, absolutely.
Well, the first, yeah, and I don't have a.
If we're going to do this, but I'm not supposed to do an article, then I would ask.
That's not the point here.
I'm just.
The point is, we're trying, we were trying to do this under what I assume, and if it's The point is, we're trying, we were trying to do this under what I assumed, and if it's my error, it's my error, and I stand grievously at fault for it. We were trying to get this whole thing done in as convenient and easy way as possible, minimizing the negative impact on morale throughout the town.
That wasn't, that wasn't any of my intent. Mr. Colley, did you submit an article?
Yes, I did.
Do you mind telling us what the article was, or do you have a copy of that such?
It was an article submitted to Diane, in regards to the non-union employees in the town hall, as well as department heads that have not received the given raises this year. I believe it was somewhere around twenty-two thousand dollars.
It was twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
My question still comes, is that from retroactive, or is that from here?
That is, um, retroactive.
Retroactive.
So, I offer here for the record, also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. That was my reasoning for putting this into executive session. That's what the law says. So if you guys don't like it, okay, we'll talk about it in open session, but I was trying to adhere to and run by the law. That's why we didn't talk about it.
But it, Jess, and I'll do fairness, we have not put this as a negotiation, it was a budget line. That's what it was. It wasn't like they were here arguing for the raises. And again, I think.
Wait, what did you say earlier, Ed? You were here on behalf of whom?
Town employees.
Right, is that negotiating? Yes. It's tacit negotiation.
I have my article, put it on the board.
Right, that's a tacit negotiation.
Well, it depends on what you say.
Well, can we, can we short-circuit this? Because we got a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in free cash, and that's where the raises are gonna come from.
Right.
And you've already heard that fifty thousand dollars is necessary for chemicals. Or are you gonna ignore that, and then make it up on a next year's budget?
Well, I say you leave it up to the town. Let them vote on it. It should be a town article, it should be an article in the warrant. Let them vote on it.
Is it typical that we let the town, that the town votes on raises? Is that a, is that, is that?
An article like this, it's a shortfall. We haven't done that in our history. And it's usually been toward free cash.
It's precedent, it's precedent.
We haven't done it in four, three years, but we've done it.
Okay, our immediate question is whether or not we're gonna discuss this in open session or executive session. So, again, it being my purview to decide, that's.
Well, maybe the first question is, should this, I don't necessarily agree with putting the arti, that article on the town warrant, but the question, first question becomes, are you gonna put that article on the town warrant?
Yeah, Ed Colley already submitted the article.
It's our, it's our decision what goes on the warrant. Anybody can draft an article, is my understanding, and suggest it to the town, but it's our meeting, it's up to us to decide what articles go into that meeting. Just as.
Now, this is just hearsay, because he's not here. But in discussing with Selectman Blanchard, he supported what I was doing. And he's not here, and that's hearsay. You have to actually have him say that.
Supporting, supporting, putting an article.
Supporting, putting an article on. And, and he's not here to do that. And I, and I would say that it's only hearsay, because I can't have him actually say the words. But he did say he would support me in this endeavor.
Well, I mean, here, and I, the reason for not doing the raises, you take that twenty-six thousand, you've got left a hundred and fifty thousand in free cash, and last year we started with how much free cash?
Two-hundred-and-nineteen, I think.
I thought it was more than that, but.
I think it's two, it was over two-hundred.
Over two-hundred, so here we go. We're down the.
Mike, I've been in here long enough to know.
I know, we're here, we're going down the slippery slope.
But, but I think we've seen negative outcome of not giving the raises. I think when we look at the dispatchers now wanting to unionize, you're seeing that they feel that they didn't, they deserve more.
You don't know what the basis of that is.
That's hearsay. But I'm just saying, and they say.
And, and we lost one officer, and who knows why we lost it.
Right, whatever.
I mean, there's gonna be a certain amount of turnover in every, in every employment situation. So, I mean, the question becomes, do you want, if you're gonna do it, do you put? I, I don't know, I'm not, now I'm talking, I don't know the great way to do it.
Yeah, well, again, it was a, a warrant article submitted by a department head, and whether or not you wanna put that department head's warrant article.
I would agree with you, that it should be up to, the, the board as a whole to decide whether or not an article goes or not.
And that's why I just wanna make sure we're not sealing the deal on a special town meeting warrant tonight, because I think there's some issues that need to be.
If I read the agenda right, we're not, because it's coming back on the twenty-third.
We're not, so that's trying to move to early, that would be more discussion.
We, there's a schedule here that indicates that it's next week.
That's right. I have a question with Dr. David. Warren, are you opposed to, wasn't, we're not gonna talk about this issue? Wasn't it was taken off the agenda at all? We're gonna talk about it in executive meeting.
Yeah, but I don't think it's appropriate for executive session.
So that seems to be the point.
But it was, but the chairman did make that decision. And I would support that decision that he made, since it seems unclear who's able to make.
But if we go in, if we go into executive session, we're all tacitly agreeing that that's a reason for executive session. I don't know, I don't know that the chairman.
It's for strategizing.
But, but, Anne, that's why you take a vote. And I would not vote to go into executive session to do this, because I don't think it's a, it's a.
You have the right to bring forth an article right now. You know that? As an addendum to the, the warrant.
Well, I'm just saying, it's already been too submitted, or not here.
Fine, what if you let that be a sum cost, and then why don't you just verbally, orally, right now, submit an article?
I would just go with that Mr. Colley's article that was already submitted in writing, that's in our office, but not on this piece of paper.
Well, I would second the, the motion to put the article on the proposed warrant. I don't know whether I will support that article when it comes time.
Right. That's fine, I mean, I just, it should be here, the process is, that's the process.
That's the process.
Well, I personally think that executive session would have been upon when we could have hashed some of this out, and.
I wouldn't.
But, Anne, executive session isn't, isn't so that we don't argue in public.
No, I know, but.
That's not the purpose for executive.
That wasn't the idea at all.
No, no, I'm just saying, but that, that's, that's a misconception.
But I just have a clarification on, on the article. And part of the issue of putting it on is, how is it going to be implemented? Because if it's a lump sum, I mean, you can put a lump sum on a free cash, and then how are you going to get that into the salary lines to pay everybody? So I did.
There's some, there's some practical problems with the whole thing.
So that's why I figured if you had a discussion and voted to put an article on, we would be able to do that in the right way. So when it goes to town meeting, it has.
It's harder to add an article as we discuss than to subtract an article while we're discussing. You know, you know.
And I guess I also.
Because we've done this in the past, we've had a list of articles, and we've kind of slashed out the ones we weren't gonna support or bring to town meeting.
So you just wanna put it on, are you going to have any discussion about anything else tonight as far as the numbers or anything? Because I do have information prepared, but I don't know if you want to. Or you just wanna put it on and then talk about?
Well, right now, there's a motion and a second to put an article on.
Yeah, I was gonna put Mr. Colley's article on, and so.
For purposes of discussion is all.
And then when Dougie's here, we can hash through it, but, and then, you know, I'm sure Dave Keelson and those guys have to figure out if it was to be passed, how to go about, you know, putting that money into different.
You got a motion and a second.
This is, and what's the motion?
Is to put the article.
On the, on the draft agenda.
Correct.
On the draft.
Our draft article, warrant.
Warrant. For the purpose of discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, as with any of these articles.
Okay.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to incorporate the warrant as submitted by Ed Colley as Article eleven or whatever place it used to be. Any further discussion? Those in favor of including the article?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right.
As for the letter regarding the union, can I just make a request that any, any letters of such magnitude be shared with the board members in a more timely fashion? I think waiting a month to learn about it is too long.
Uh huh, sure. Okay, we have two forest-cutting plans, then.
Has Ed been aware of these?
Ed, you know, I'll take. I'm not aware of it, but Mr. Volkentry, he had met with the forester about this one, and he agreed that they should be coming into my office with proper permits. So we had come in, Volkentry had his decision, of course, for, for proper permit, as far as access, and forcing the right of right of.
So.
We had one phone call, awaiting the general motion.
So, they have not come to you?
Really have.
So.
I believe the forester has been telling them that, but not by the call by the senior.
So, is the best thing for us not to approve these?
Um, you know, we're coming in, and when we did, it's always been a timely matter.
So why don't we, I, I would move that we not approve these forest-cutting plans and send the letter to the fore, uh, the who?
Uh, State Forester.
The state.
I did contact, I contacted the State Forester because when we get these forest-cutting plans, and they have this on them, this stamp that's filled in, this is already approved by, by him. We don't have any approval authority over this. He's already approved these plans. What I, what we have discussed at our meeting with him is that we're supposed to get a copy of this from the applicant at the same time he gets it. That's the law. And that's the problem. The issue is, I don't know if he's telling people to go to Ed or not, but the issue is, we're still not getting them from the applicants.
One of these is in 'oh eight.
To allow us that ten-day period.
One of these is dated 'oh eight.
Yeah, that might be, that's an extension. But the other one, and we have had several that have come through that haven't been. So if we can, when I receive this, I contact him, and then, and then he gives, he, he will tell these people to hold off and give us our ten-day comment period. Because the Conservation Commission has a ten-day comment period, and they get a copy and they send it directly to Ed. But if they don't get it until after it's already been approved by DCR, we don't have a comment period. So we're working, trying to get, but he, you know, he's telling the applicants they have to do that. And as you can see on this, I put, send Sean an email on ten-nineteen, first time we are receiving this, no time to review. And then I CC'd to Ed and Charlie the email. Because that's, that's really the problem, is we're not getting them from the applicants to review them. There's nothing that we can, we've already talked to the State Forester, all he can do is tell us.
What can we do if, if they start, and, can, is there any cease and desist?
Going about town robbery.
That's, so, so that's.
For that part, for Ed's part.
Do they have to have a road cut to get in there, or?
So, why can't we write back to these that, you know, is, whatever involvement of public land, and they are not to cross public land or access public roads until they've got a permit?
Proper permit.
Proper permit.
I think, you know, with all due respect to the State Forester, he's been, he's very adamant, I mean, at first we got information that he couldn't do it, after the settlement, so this isn't a problem, he could do it.
Because these guys have done some serious damage to the roads at times.
Uh, they have in the past, and we get some, they go against insurance companies. Uh, we were pretty diligent about what they were doing or not. Sometimes these permits are given, and we're not aware of it, and there's no permit, so we're not, you know, looking at dirt roads and stuff and they're gonna be working. You know, but for the most part, we are aware where they are. And, um, I just don't want to be chasing these guys' permits, it's not my job.
No.
Turns into a, you know, a permit that's twenty-five or thirty dollars, and we're chasing around things aside, so I gotta go back. This is not what we're here for. We have the responsibility to.
But maybe if we get a cease and desist on somebody, it'll, word'll get around.
Ed, does Rich have a role in that, to sort of be like an enforcement officer?
No.
No?
But, I mean, I assume they're hauling this lumber out in big trucks, I mean.
Yes, very big trucks.
And we had talked at one time about getting.
Very early in the morning, sometimes.
Oh.
Three, four o'clock in the morning.
But we had talked at one point in time about getting the scales in here to start weighing these guys.
So another question, I'll go.
Because some, wherever they're hauling, the bridges may not be, your, your bridges may not be strong enough to do it. They're probably overweight going through there.
Okay, so Michael, you had the recommendation of not approving these, even though they've done instead, our understanding is.
Yeah, I, I understand it, but I think we refuse to approve them and send a note that, you know, they're not, they're not approved until they've gotten the proper permits, and if they choose to ignore the permitting process, um.
Point is, by not, you're not signing, you might not be able to stop them working on private property. The point is, you're not signing because you don't have a proper permit.
Right. So as soon as they cross onto public land, they can, they can cut all the trees they want on private property, that's not a problem. It's when they cross on our, on.
A lot of times they'll rip up, um, right away, or, you know, loading area for the logs.
Right. And there's the dirt on the road, is a big issue with them, too.
Track, if they don't put any, put that there.
I, I would move that we not approve.
Okay, we have a second for that.
Okay.
Any further discussion to move, motions were made and seconded to not approve both of these forest-cutting plans?
And, and should we maybe just send a letter that we didn't approve them? And not that it has any weight and authority, but let them know that we did not approve.
Yeah, I think I'll, you know, I'll send a note, something to Sean, and tell him we're still struggling with the issue.
Well, not only Sean, but.
The forester.
The forester.
The forester should be notified.
Right, that's, oh, you mean the actual.
So they, I mean.
The licensed timber harvester. The timber harvester is the guy who's gonna.
Mr. Law and Twin Acre Tree Service should both be notified.
That their permits were, or whatever.
They need some additional permits.
What it is, I mean, you're denying it, you can't go any further. But if they come in, absolutely receive a letter from your office saying, you're denying it, you know, no, the permits are gonna be handed out. But they do execute them, and they wanna get started, they need to resubmit.
Right. I had an.
Now, those in favor of not approving?
I just found this under my pile. It's, um.
You see it?
No.
It's a litigation.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a question on this.
Somehow it ended up over here. Without.
Okay, any, all those in favor of motions been made and seconded to not approve the two forest-cutting plans? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. Now that does bring us into.
Just wanted to leave it there, because.
Open type for the public. Okay, they're being done, um, executive session in Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Hash four. This is with respect to police union negotiations, I will read the reasons, convening executive session.
This actually is not, it's number four.
Right, to discuss the deployment of our strategy regarding. You know, not many new ones.
That's, that, that may not be, is that the new one, or?
Yeah.
What is it, what does that import?
To discuss the deployment of our strategy regarding security personnel devices.
That's right, that's what you asked.
Okay, my apologies, I didn't see that. Okay. Number four, this is to discuss the deployment of our strategy regarding security personnel or devices, ergo a sting operation. And I would point out here, Michael, and the chair, so the players, in that number three. Okay, so, um, we will not be going back into open session. Thank you for your attendance.